Okay. Yeah, we'll call the regular meeting of the Nevada City Council's order Monday, November thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, six o'clock PM. Can we get a roll call, please?
Right, Captain.
Here.
Barb and then here. Dana Nelson.
Here.
We call you, Jason.
Here.
You guys stay here. Excuse me.
Okay, and then the audio is not working in the room, so Jason's on my phone, so we'll all have to try to speak up so we can follow discussion tonight. And Jason, if you're having trouble, let us know. Um, so first item was approval of the agenda.
This is approved. Second.
So Dane, Sandy, any discussion? Seeing none, council please vote.
Aye.
Okay, that is approved. Takes us into the public hearing for their verbio annexation. We will go ahead and open up the public hearing. Did we receive any written oral comment? Anyone here to speak in the public hearing regarding the verbio annexation? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, moving to Resolution number twenty-one, twenty-two, three, twenty-two, four, resolution approving the annexation of territory into the city of Nevada, Iowa, Verbio Nevada LLC.
Move to approve.
Steve and Brian, any discussion there? Seeing none, council please vote.
Aye.
That is approved, gets us to the consent agenda. Any item may be removed for separate consideration? Dane and Barb? Seeing no discussion, council please vote.
Aye.
That is approved, just takes us into the public forum. Time to decide for comments from the public on topics of city business other than those listed on the agenda. No action may be taken. First up in the public forum is a presentation from Nevada Firefighters Incorporated.
Please, uh, we remember. All of you have proven. Several of them, Mr. Ray, that. Uh, yeah, several people have given multi-year contracts, uh, or ones. Even towards the city, so it, uh, I'm happy to report the entire cost of the engine has been raised and suspended funds as long as we have. Uh, so it's not going to, I think, you just have to come forward and we'll do a group presentation and check around as one hundred. Uh, and this would be from businesses, the township, the association itself, uh, anybody who's made a tax deductible donation to the Nevada Fire Fighters, it is a final one, C3, which incidentally is a great idea for your end-of-year donation. Uh, this is pretty positive for that money, help, uh, major projects.
Good.
I don't know. Good here. Maybe some more, Jack, over here.
Yeah, make sure, make sure you're. There you go, you can turn around, boy, there. All right. Look here, here. Hey, one more, good smile.
So, as we, uh, present the check to Karen, um, I would like to point out that Chris Meltzer is in deputy chief, so he's the second in command, but he's also the president of the association. Jason Corbin is the vice president of the association. Niselda is secretary of the association. Veronica is actually works at a bank, uh, and is just shy of the CPA since she's our treasurer. And then Jeff Dalepress has helped with a lot of our financing as well. And Noah is the captain, who's been, uh, in the association.
Well, and on behalf of the city and the council, want to thank the Ray and the rest of the department for all the hard work on this. It definitely was a big undertaking, and the citizens will greatly benefit from having up-to-date equipment. So, thank you all for all you did. And for everyone in town that contributed. Anything else from council? Okay, then we'll continue on in the public forum. Is there anyone else here to speak in the public forum? Mark?
I guess this, I'm, I'm purpose serving as vice president of Main Street. Had a, please, uh, don't read, because Marson talking about, see, we do. Yeah, something like that, myself. Actually, I'm Chris. We identified everything we harvest in this, uh. I'm Joe.
Well, I think the plan is to either have the, I want to say in the front park area, um, I think Joe and the crew have come up with a good plan on how to stabilize it and make it work. So, um, just wanted to present it to you.
If we went to Cullow, you call it one every year, so there's probably an eight, eight-foot wall down, but you have a piece of log in the middle, the hole, like you got on that, and you run tape, kind of hide it, and that's how they do theirs. Find it on a panel. We're gonna do it with green state?
Yeah, that's the plan.
Yeah, Cullow doesn't even street that. But we're not doing it in the street. No.
[laughing] Yeah.
It's creepy, I think, is.
After.
After, in January, and so it's.
Yeah, it's not consistently cold enough before Christmas.
I didn't think of that earlier.
I mean, temperatures and everything might be early January or mid-January. I think it was mid-January last year when they built it.
I'd mistaken the said yes, so.
It seems very appropriate for it to.
Yeah.
It's a trend of.
I think it'd be. Yeah, a great amenity.
You're really nice. Thanks, guys, for working on that. We have to take action on or can we just do it with staff? Okay.
Give your action.
Okay.
Yes, we can't do action in the public forum anyway?
I'm seeing all thumbs up.
Thank you, please.
Thank you. Anything else in the public forum?
Uh, my name's Nathan Harris. I'm the newer resident of Nevada here. Um, I guess that's a little odd. I was like the lead with, uh, not any, like, mental illness or anything, pretty serious thing in common with the area. Uh, so I started doing some, some looking into the history of the town here a couple months ago, and also I've been doing some other research projects in other towns as well throughout the state of Iowa. Noticed that there is a pattern, um, specifically in downtown areas, uh, like our store down here. Uh, there's no log of who built these buildings, and so I thought that was a little odd. Um, I started to trace that back, started looking at other references as well. I've actually found our town on sandstorm maps and a lot of the buildings that were allegedly built, you know, uh, the eighteen-eights. I found these on maps and, like I said, fire attorney maps decades before they were supposed to be built. Uh, and a lot of them consist in the blood, the active history of the state, um, even in the, I guess, the Hamburg for Nevada, the voices from our past, it was both, I think, another historical subject, two years ago. Uh, and all of that, uh, it talks through all the downtown buildings and, uh, they're very split, all lists and sites built around eighteen-eighty, built around eighteen, whatever. Um, and then the list of every business has been essentially eighteen-eights. However, no reference to builder, how it was built, who it was built by. Um, I cross-referenced that with the census records from Story County. I found that we had absolutely no brick masons. We had a brick maker thirty years after we built them, and that's about it. Um, like I said, this is not anything specific to Nevada. This is something that I've noticed in a lot of other places. So, I think that there is a lot of information that's left to be found out. Um, I've been kind of creeping around these buildings on sidewalks, taking photos of them, uh, and I'd like to get on the inside of those and maybe see if there's like marking on the bricks or something like that. I know it's not probably the city council's biggest concern right now, but, you know, is there any way, like, to talk to somebody about doing that, possibly get like an escort or something, bring them in there? How's that?
Yeah, I think you just need to reach out to the property owners, and I can help you with reaching out to some of them, um.
Yeah, Main Street.
Three of them right here, actually, sometimes. So, um, the other thing is, we do have a historical review that we're required to do for the Main Street program. I can't remember if that actually mentions who made, uh, built the buildings, but I'd be happy.
You don't? Okay.
I would be happy to send that over to you. That way you could help with your research.
Yeah, now the state archives pretty much block me from under. Otherwise, I'm worried. All of them, most of them. This drove a lot deeper than this was not. But, uh, yeah, no, we could do that, I would be.
That's something you can work with our historical commission?
Well, I was just gonna say, I need someone to appoint to the historic preservation commission, and you sound like somebody who might be volunteering.
Oh, yeah. I think so.
Okay, so we need to capture your information. Yeah.
We can do it tonight, but.
Yeah.
If you wanna grab a piece of paper and write down your information, um, I mean, I, I do remember where you live, 'cause I came out and checked out your porch that one day, but, um, like, I don't have any of your information, so I don't just come knocking on your door one day to, you know, but.
Yeah, that is, that'd be appreciated, that'd be.
Huh?
Or it did happen to two blocks that were burnt down. New construction, new construction, could be different from the original. So, I can get with you. Yes, please. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Seeing nobody else in the public forum, we will close the public forum, moving to Old Business A, ordinance number ten forty-seven, twenty-two-three, twenty-two-four, and ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Nevada, Iowa, two thousand and six by amending provisions pertaining to sewer use charges, chapter ninety-nine, second reading.
Second.
Brian, Sandy, any discussion there? For those who are here watching, that is to be able to get the loan for the wastewater plant with the intention of amending it again once the industrial commercial study is complete. See no other discussion, council please vote.
Aye.
That's approved, takes us to B, Fieldhouse Project Contractor HPC LLC, A approved pay request number sixteen in the amount of four hundred and twenty-three thousand, eight hundred and fourteen dollars, ninety-five cents. Dane, Barb? Seeing no discussion, council please vote.
Aye.
That is approved, takes us to B, approved change order number two in the amount of fifty-three thousand, fifty-six dollars.
Second.
Brian, Steve? Seeing no discussion, council please vote.
Aye.
That's approved, takes us to C, pay request number nine for twenty-two-two Street Improvement Project from Anas Incorporated in the amount of three hundred and sixty-two thousand, six hundred and seventy-eight dollars, seventy-nine cents. Barb and Dane? Seeing no discussion, council please vote.
Aye.
That is approved. D, approved pay request number twenty-nine for wastewater facility improvements phase two from Williams Brothers Construction Incorporated in the amount of nine hundred and ninety-seven thousand, five hundred and sixty-six dollars and three cents.
Move to approve.
Stephen, Sandy? Seeing no discussion, council please vote.
Aye.
That's approved, takes us to E, approved pay request number nineteen for wastewater treatment facility improvements phase three from Boomerang Corporation in the amount of nineteen thousand, one hundred and ninety-nine dollars and sixty-one cents.
Second.
Brian and Dane? Seeing no discussion, council please vote.
Aye.
That is approved, takes us to F, approved pay request number thirteen for wastewater treatment facility improvements phase four from Ontrack Construction LLC in the amount of seventy-three thousand, one hundred and nine dollars, twenty-four cents.
Second.
Barb, Steve? Seeing no discussion, council please vote.
Aye.
Approved, takes us to G, approved purchase of security cameras for street department?
Yeah, I was not waiting on it, was it? Street department cameras?
Yeah, we, we never had any up there. Either our building, if somebody were to just punch through that window. Now we're gonna have to vote for him, 'cause he told him I could add.
[laughing]
Where are you going? Uh, there's, there's. Just anything. We're pretty happy with the company with the other on track.
Yeah, we've been really satisfied with what they've done, done with all of them, and, um, as of right now, they're at all of our facilities. Been a great job installing. They've been, uh, relatively, um, the cost has been pretty low compared to other places, and the one thing that is great about Astros, we're able, able to have our own NVR system, which prevents us from paying a monthly fee up to the cloud and a lot of those other security cameras. Uh, the companies don't allow that. So, it saves us money every month.
Well, making motion to approve.
Stephen, Sandy, any discussion? Seeing none, council please vote.
Aye.
Approved, takes us to H, discussion appropriate follow-up regarding CBD project storm line issues in alleyway. As you all remember, with Andy's building, we'd asked them to track the additional costs outside of the project otherwise approved and bring that back.
Captured all, Andy, but. Project done, everything's complete now?
No, no, probably not till next season.
Do you think there might be more of this?
There'll be a little bit more. Uh. That's what I'm saying, you can get side locks in this season. That's why. And this is a hundred percent not in place. I'm fine with waiting for, uh, the contractors they've got for the downstalls. Probably can't get here this season. Only hoping it does, because if you look at the, uh, install instructions for rubber road, I'm not sure I've got today, but temperature range to do a stitch from the roof to a stopper box, so. So, we, looking at downstalls and others, side lock, probably will, uh, flash and we're ready to get to this number.
Any idea what the second round is gonna cost?
I don't know, but, I mean, the guys are on four buildings. That's not me, that's the city department.
Yep.
Couple hours of labor on top, depending on how, how contacted the door. It might be part of Jay's dead life, I don't know, if he's died earlier in the road, uh, and further access inside more, I agree.
Okay. So, how do we wanna handle that? Are we just approve it piece by piece? Is that one?
I think what, in the future season, we would have to deal with then, that you do have the current cost, so if you look that over and feel comfortable, believe it's all accurate, then.
Was Andy so far the only one who's been, done anything? As far as.
As far as.
Well, I mean, one of the buildings was under construction. At the heat, you know, Tom was fighting the bridge, the whole thing, just the problem way up, oh, and watching good in heaven. But, I mean, he was under construction during, so this stuff he was dealing with, incoming water to, uh, concrete floor. Then had. The water comes in, I, I, this is me speaking for, I can talk about a second. He had a mess, but he alerted me right away. It was, you know, this was after the first of the rains. Unfortunately, the reason was, um, he kept going, his on-track thought maybe he'd get made a week after, uh, the first time, and then two weeks later, he had two more plus, and it just kept getting worse of him. It ever take a month after, you know, we discussed this, they got into the project. But then he had a plus, he called me on the way I went to work, and popped up, he had already the floor cleaned out, and we popped it to drain them out. And as bad, I started running up and speaking, and then I already had the equipment, so I bet he had, he had some stuff getting that, and so it's, that's between him and him, he, he had some effort in creating that. Here it's, it's him pretty quickly, and I just, I drained them out, like, they had a couple of clean up. Uh, I think then that Myers and the margins has water, I don't know what condition his basement is, if he uses it for anything, you know. Unfortunately, he was using one of those, so, see, this, it had been a human mess down there for two and a half years, it took us that long to figure out what was going on. We weren't using it, and, and as they ran, it baffled and stayed that way. And I think the water came from the side, and we could get the basement drained out, so, uh, second pump in to drain it, and we basically threw the other way down here, and started. So, I, I wasn't using my basement. The best use of it is, I think his elevation was up a little bit from us. He had water, but it's out on the boxy floor, we found a, or a path, leading to that, and, and his boxy floor, you know. So, I guess that was my question. So far, being the owner of this guy, he's been able to hold us.
Right, yeah.
And I assume staff reviewed everything too?
Yeah, we did review that. Um, yeah, just looks pretty straightforward.
Any other questions or motions from council?
Get to you, hope you did on this. Still, voice in my opinion, other people responsible for some of the funnies, but that'd be part, you know, contributing. Leverage what we can to make. Over. My opinion, their negligence, but, set on the record again. Moving to the makers. I'll move you up for it.
Any noises from K, B, and then? Second.
Brian and Steve, further discussion? Seeing none, council please vote.
Aye.
That is approved, takes us to do Business A, Resolution number twenty-three, twenty-two-three, twenty-two-four, resolution to approve professional agreement for municipal engineering services at JEO Consulting Group Incorporated for twenty-two-three bridge repairs and load ratings. Brian and Dane, discussion? Seeing none, council please vote.
Aye.
That's approved, takes us to B, Resolution number twenty-four, twenty-two-three, twenty-two-four, resolution approving professional agreement for municipal engineering services with WHKS and Company for FNG Avenue HMA Overlay Project. Sandy, Brian? Seeing no discussion, council please vote.
Aye.
That's approved. C, Resolution number twenty-five, twenty-two-three, twenty-two-four, resolution accepting amendment to sanitary sewer easements of Keith B. Davis and Denise Davis. Barb, Dane? Seeing no discussion, council please vote.
Aye.
That's approved, takes us to D, discussion appropriate follow-up regarding requests from Main Street Nevada. You have a request in your packet? You know, if staff or Main Street have anything they'd like to add?
Well, you know, I think we've been doing this in the past, so I, I don't think it, I mean, it makes sense for us to continue to do this. We have the equipment and, um, easier if we can get up there and take care of the banners, and we've, in the past, we've done a lot of the lighting anyways, so, um, we can continue down that road.
Main Street doesn't want volunteers on ladders and installing things.
It's safer for the safety to do it.
Yeah, 'cause we have the proper training and equipment.
And protecting our new poles.
And protecting our new poles.
Maybe you think they're really nice amenities. I got someone from out of town complimented them today, so, nice touch. You need a motion to approve the request, probably, or, or is it just there's another agreement gonna be written that's more detailed? Or do we just go with the letter that's in?
I think we'll probably have to do a, a resolution, um.
Okay, in the future.
For follow-up, I think this was just basically to get it in front of your eyes.
Get consensus?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. I'm seeing heads nodding, everyone in consensus, you wanna see a resolution, okay? And that takes us to E, ordinance number ten forty-eight, twenty-two-three, twenty-two-four, and ordinance amending chapter sixty-five, stopper yard required. The city code to require stops and additional intersections, first reading. Most enthusiastic motion you've ever made, Dane. Dane and Brian? Discussion?
Did we have any new feedback on that, or that's just based on what we heard? So, go.
I did, they both said they just got used to stabbing, and then we took them down. So, I think consistency is a good thing. But we may wanna say that, it's a purpose, but we're not, this is.
Well, I know you typically don't wave second and third readings, but if you did do that, we'd be able to put the stop signs up right away on, on nineteen, the south.
Are we planning to have them in that, or?
We, we will have some sort of lighting there. We probably won't be purchasing the stop signs up, the full lighting, those, those went up quite a bit, and, um, it's.
More like what we have on Second Street, so that they're light on that flash.
Yep, yep.
I think you like stop sign.
We will need to put one of those up, um, probably on both north and south side, yeah.
I think we need to make sure they're properly placed as well. I think the ones over at last time, really poorly placed.
Joe and I, uh.
Our plan is, if you go north across the bridge, we'll need.
My plan is, if you go north across the bridge, we'll need
I don't talk about people in the other one, how down the order is going.
Yeah, yeah.
Time's good, we'll make it more than this. There's a speed limit actually.
Uh, I think it's right up to hospital.
Thirty-five. Not that anybody but you, no.
Anything else on that? Okay, council please vote.
Aye.
I'll make the motion to waive second and third readings on.
Brian, Dane, any discussion on waiving the final readings? Seeing none, council please vote. Okay.
Frank is in.
Aye.
Or the mid-high, Daniel's in.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I'm waiving the second and third is approved. Moves us to F, approved renewal of Nevada senior citizens agreement for use of the Nevada senior community center.
Thank you, Chris.
Steve and Dane? Okay, seeing no discussion, council please vote.
Aye.
Did I miss it up there? Okay, approved. Okay, moves us to G, Vercata Security Controlled Entry Access for the Wastewater Treatment Facility Administration Building, West Side.
This is basically, um, a FOB system on one of the doors at our new wastewater facility, now, it's really not required on the, any of the other doors, and Harold didn't think he needed extra FOB systems. Uh, basically, this is just going to cover that west door for the administration building out there.
Barb and Brian, any discussion? Seeing none, council please vote.
Aye.
That is approved, takes us to reports, starting with city administrator.
Uh.
No. Oh, mine doesn't have it, sorry. Okay. I'll just read, Aaron. Resolution number twenty-six, twenty-two, three, twenty-two, four, a resolution approving the economic development assistance contract by Midstate Material Handling and Fabrication Incorporated, the city of Nevada, and the Iowa Economic Development Authority Contract Number Twenty-four HQJP zero-zero-three. Brian, Sandy? Seeing no discussion, council please vote.
Aye.
Are they yeses? Okay, that is approved. So now reports.
All right, uh, so we had our, the hour Nevada meeting, um, unfortunately, we are going to be seeing an increase of four hundred dollars per entity involved. And that's due to paper costs and things along those lines. We did talk about reaching out to other groups, uh, and I know Joe Wakeman with the school, he has reached out to other groups in the past, and basically, these other groups outsource. And we figure it's probably gonna get outsourced to Sigler, which we're already with Sigler anyway, so we're not as, we'll stick with them. We will continue to reach out to these other groups and see if there's any other pricing that is a little bit cheaper or about the same. The one concern that we have is if this is going to continue to raise in the future, we don't wanna keep increasing every single year, it'd be nice if it leveled off, but we do not know how that will go, so we're waiting to see on that. Had a lot of wastewater meetings with Ed pertaining to the documents that we're proposing, the pre-treat, pre-treatment manual, um, the agreements, the wastewater treatment agreements that we're going to be having with industries. Had another meeting pertaining to our residential housing and the future growth of that. Follow-up on our inner-city vis- visit. And we, we have quite a busy week this week, we have our fieldhouse dedication at five-thirty on Tuesday, so tomorrow. Flight to Empoleo, five to seven, that's at the Ames Airport on Wednesday. And then our annual NBC and Main Street Dinner, which is, uh, Thursday at five-thirty, that starts. Uh, the last council meeting, I discussed our leader, my leadership development series, I think I told you, four months, that's actually, uh, four classes and four weeks, so it's been kinda busy, but it's been very rewarding, and I've learned quite a bit, you know. Uh, budget meetings and more to come for those. Um, and then, uh, a couple of things that, uh, I wanted to discuss were, were school zones and speed limit on South G, so last council meeting, we did have a citizen come in and express her concern about the speed on that, so I did draft, uh, a change in, in there, so I was going to propose changing that speed limit to twenty-five, especially with the, uh, new build-out for the senior center, or the assisted living that the, um, hospital is building, I think it's just going to exacerbate traffic in the area, so with your direction, I'll put that on the next council meeting for, uh, to vote on that, or if, if everyone is in, in line. I know last meeting, you discussed having a little bit higher police presence in that area, uh, I can't speak for the police, but I believe they have been over there and been checking things out, I don't know what their numbers are or anything for it, but, um, and then the other thing, Jason asked me to look into school zones, but one specifically, we have on H Avenue, there's about a block and a half, maybe two blocks max, that is not covered in a school zone. Um, and I thought it made sense to basically make that whole entire area a school zone. Then I started looking at our ordinances and noticed that we didn't have anything in our ordinances pertaining to school zones, so I had to reach out to Aaron to ask her some questions, 'cause I was like, how do we even create this? So, um, she ca, she did look some of that up with, um, I can't remember what community, but a couple of other communities, and looked for examples on how we can propose that, so um, with your direction, if you guys are okay, I'll plan on creating other ordinance for that and have that on our next council meeting as well.
And one thing too, for this speed limit, is in the past, we've had requests, you also said engineers and public safety look at it, 'cause I know Rick has said, if you, if you move it, it can be unintended, because some, it needs to be high enough that most people drive there naturally, or else you create more hazards. So, just as long as they review it, I'm fine with it.
That's all I have. Yeah, uh, nineteenth to eleventh. I think there's about two or three blocks that it's not, uh, twenty-five, uh, that's thirty-five, so I'm Yeah, yeah.
Thanks. My report would be pretty brief, 'cause Jordan hit most of it with the, all the stuff going on this week, and other than that, shouldn't say it out loud, but it was a quiet couple of weeks, so, council, anything for me? Council reports?
Am I gonna talk about your birthday coming up?
Nope.
Well, uh, I kind of get my personal goal. Have more live entertain, uh, entertainment opportunities in Nevada. Uh, we've got many names coming to the Cana Lot during Christmas on May, so they'll be returning to town, um, just have to stay, they have a beach party in January, uh, with, uh, Christie Hall and the last week's session office, so that'll be a fun event in the middle of winter, for people to be able to kind of pretend to try, which are in Iowa. Just got confirmation on another one, uh, for, uh, February, that will be announced soon, so it's big names of town, it's, uh, it's good to know that, uh, at our time, we have a reputation for, you know, this, this kind of thing. So we just got a lot of that, and just hope that people, you know, happens.
Any other reports? And we'll go back to staff.
Uh, my staff's been out doing the cameras, again, and sewers, uh, they've been out sleeping every day, as you can see. Doing the banners and certain things. And then on the stop signs, how soon are we letting them get those? Hey, we wait, it's pretty long, that's a problem. It, I know everybody's gonna wanna have it gone, but it means you get the residents' time, right, we're gonna have them, it's gonna be this day. But be going out at six o'clock tomorrow morning, it's very tough, you know?
I think, what, Marla, how much do you think for notice for people, obviously, social media we can do now. Probably don't wanna wait for the next, our Nevada that has rooms, so probably just better fit it out?
Well, this week, this week would be perfect, 'cause we got in lines, so, and if it's thirty-three, I'm not gonna just let something fall, put them on Friday? Or next week? Three to four, right? I just think that you need to, didn't want
Yeah. I'd say coordinate with Marla and try to get it out. Come up with a plan.
Absolutely, did get a meeting, created, do everything organized. Whatever you need, Joe.
Your list technically has to be published before it's official, but
And when does that happen? Okay. Yeah, no, so as long as everyone's in the loop.
If I get the lines made, then you'll kind of give them, like, it's on page, it's gonna be coming up here. People are gonna be questioning where the stop mark's there, but
Yeah, but then, uh, once the bar's there, it's almost better to have it there, 'cause people are gonna get really confused.
They're gonna be too busy looking at the phones.
No. Well, and, so it's is, am I hearing that the signs can be up, we just can't write tickets until Thursday? So I'd say get signs up when it's convenient, let the PD know, just don't write tickets until Thursday. You don't like that?
Next Thursday.
Or we can wait till the Monday after. Well, we don't wanna put them up on Thanksgiving, but they can do Friday. Okay, it's council good whatever Joe and Marla and Steve come up with, okay, three of you can work together.
Because, um, we did, uh, we had a house fire last week at, uh, Fifteenth Street Place, and we couldn't get a ladder parking on both sides. Ended up having to drive down Fifteenth Street with some lawyers. Uh, as we also had a medical call this week, and couldn't get an ambulance. So, uh, we're, uh, Director Martinez suggested we do this all at one night, and cover all of our streets that are not as white. And I understand, uh, the potential for the need for a parking on one side of the other. Turn it down at Fifteenth Street Place. The vehicle, you have to kind of mind your, where you're going, you definitely can't be distracted, which is but, uh, getting a motor truck in, that caused me some, party to save me. So, I'll be working with Joe and, uh, Chief Brandis, and we'll, uh, kind of take a look, if you prefer, we just do the whole town and get this done at one time. Or just take that town quadrant where we're having a problem right now.
I like the comprehensive approach. Rip the Band-Aid off. Marla has a report. You look excited about it.
I'm here to, um, add to what Jordan was talking about, Arna Data. 'Cause I did it through other discussions, we are currently working, the city is working with name, human, digital community guide. That guide is going to be funded through advertising. And so, like, you own a business in here, and you haven't put anything in the guide, it's gonna be a promotional piece for any business, you're trying to recruit people, and you can have a lot of information about Nevada, the city, expense, um, educational opportunities. We are not gonna mail to every resident, we're gonna save money on that aspect of it, but it's gonna be available on all kinds of community spend, it's gonna be in packets, if we have conferences, come to town, it's gonna be, the school's gonna utilize it, the medical needs for these, uh, employees, we're gonna put it out at tournaments, we're gonna do everything we can to make , you know, it available to people that we want to see it as a promotional piece. Um, the other good thing is, because we're doing it right now, we already have more ad revenue in it, so it's gonna cost us to print it. And those revenues are gonna support future increases on Arna Data printing. While we can, so if we can save that money, we can help that increases on Arna Data don't have to come back to these entities involved. So if you own a business, or another major owns a business, and you have not accomplished, we're still collecting ads for that through the first part of November, uh, December. You can actually help fund Arna Data in the future by running ads in the guide system. Does that make sense for everybody? So, talk to Emily, or talk to me, if you have a business and you would be willing to run an ad, because it's a great way to promote your business to people that visit or are looking at our soundings, but it's also gonna help keep Arna Data going.
Ms. Marla? Aaron?
I don't really have anything, we have a budget workshop on Thursday.
Okay.
Uh, Jordan mentioned, uh, dedication, or are you being, um, I would just add to that, that, um, it's about thirty-five, forty minutes. Will be somewhat restricted into where we can go there, they won't be able to, um, do that work, but, yeah. So, um, just wanted to let everybody know that, but, uh, hopefully probably be part of that. The only other item I have for you tonight is next Tuesday, I'll be at our annual thing. About thirty, it's, and, uh, we got a huge number of people there, so if anybody can help with that, uh, any help would be very appreciated, about to be there, and we'll serve. And completion of that, I think, we'll see. We're looking at, uh, four hundred and seventy vehicles. It just changed from today.
You can count, you can count me in now.
So, yeah, um, if you can, that'd be great, and that's it, I'm just gonna Uh, but that's all I have, any other questions? Thanks.
Not a lot, but, Gloria, I do want to pull up a little bit about South G, so, we did set up a few hours of detail, P, because unfortunately, um, unfortunately, didn't really see a lot of, a lot of additions, but a lot of people just are there, that's the truth of the law, so um, that administration feature itself, just about data, there's some software, but the best tool we have, that also, um, is a key, and also so we're making that software. So we're making that software, basically, start doing that, and then showing it, they're going to be using it on some, on the work, you know, before, um, in addition to that, we have, uh, a few ones about S fourteen, the video and, uh, speed violations, so there's, uh, traffic enforcement on vacation. For hiring, so one, um, in, um, works on it, it's a agreement, I'm speaking to all the coordinators, whether that, that keeps going or not, but that's what it is. So, S fourteen, North is finally open, uh, opened up, so, it's, uh, it's, uh, I did want to have, um, the end of discussion, uh, they're not done with the others completely, but they are functioning. Want to make sure that that mark is cleared, that they're not just draining water off the ground next to it, and flooding basin, that it worked up to the tile, and put in there and stuff like that, um. Had two more of our payment properties still that are going to be remodeled, uh, over the wintertime and utilized again. And the meeting Tuesday, next week, um, with one of the other owners, moves a couple of, houses on the place, and, uh, over the back. Try and get those back on market, go back, being with them. Questions? Okay?
Karen? Um? I want this, now, Mike?
I can just add a little bit, really, to, uh, the information that was in the, uh, report, bringing on the risk work on project. There's one new item that came up here this last month, a basic of the station, legs and. To our attention, we've been working with the contractor and suppliers on that, and options are not, we're seeing and forward with that situation. Even set a meeting to discuss what we found out here with the staff, it's, it's a election kind of, but there's some new information that was included in the report about that, the way, the way, and the station project, so, there are any specific questions about it.
Thanks, Mike. Karen? Council, anything else? Dane, Sandy, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? And then we stand adjourned.
Kevin, don't leave, we got our extended session.
Okay, extended session, so, Jason, I'll probably call you directly, because Zoom might, will be ending.
Yep.